Yes. The Notice Requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting in a notice posted in the first-floor main lobby of the Pittkin Education Center of Bergen Community College and mailed to the record and the Ridgewood News, and it was filed with the clerk of the county of Bergen.
At this time, Judy, I would like to welcome back for reappointment Dorothy Blakesley, and when Jermaine gets here, we'll swear her in too if she's delayed. So Dorothy, the oath of office.
I, Dorothy Blakesley
I, Dorothy Blakesley
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
Of the state of New Jersey
Of the state of New Jersey
And I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same
And to the government
And to the government
Established in the United States and in this state.
I solemnly swear I solemnly swear
That I will
That I will
Impartially
Impartially
And justly perform
And justly perform
All the duties
All the duties
Of the Office of Trustee
Of the Office of Trustee
Of Bergen Community College
Bergen Community College
In the county of Bergen
In the county of Bergen
In the state of New Jersey
In the state of New Jersey
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
At this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
E. Carter, Forreston
Here.
Dorothy Blakesley
Here.
Phil Ciarco
Here.
James Demetracas
Joanne Mecca
Here.
Anthony Miller
James Napolitano
Here.
Michael Neglia
Jermaine Ortiz
Irene Ojo
Here.
Nora Peck
Lorraine Durwin
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
And to the republic for which it stands
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, reports. Vice Chairman.
Mr. Carter. As I reported a couple of months ago, we did hold the opening of the incubator for Hispanic companies down at the Meadowlands, and we continue to generate a tremendous amount of interest from the business community, and I've been in contact with both Linda Caruso and Christine Gillespie, and I think that in the course of the next few months, we'll see some event planning come out of there, especially as relates to participating in our Latino Week that we have on the campus. Thank you, Carter.
Thank you. Secretary.
We recommend the approval and the consent agenda today.
Thank you, Jim. Treasurer.
The Audit Finance Committee met about 10 days ago. We reviewed the college's financial position, and we'll be recommending that the college approve the resolutions that are attached.
Thanks, Dottie. Madam President.
Good evening, everyone. If I could have Larry Levanka please stand. Congratulations are in order to Larry and his team. Last week, it was announced that they have been awarded the NCNPR Medallion Awards for Best College Newsletter and Best College Video Program. So congratulations to Larry and his team.
Jermaine, just come in.
Please.
Welcome.
I apologize. I'm a pediatrician.
We understand. Judy wants -- we'll swear you in, okay?
I, Jermaine Ortiz
I, Jermaine Ortiz
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
Of the state of New Jersey
Of the state of New Jersey
And I will bear true faith and allegiance
I will bear true faith Faith and allegiance
To the same
To the same
And to the governments established
And to the governments established
In the United States
In the United States
And in this state
And in this state
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially
And justly perform
And justly perform
All the duties
All the duties
Of the Office of Trustee
Of the Office of Trustee
Of Bergen Community College
Bergen Community College
In the county of Bergen
In the county of Bergen
State of New Jersey
State of New Jersey
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
So help me God
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd just like to let all of you know, especially those who may not be familiar with Jermaine, that she previously served on this board, and I welcome her back, and we welcome your talents to the mat.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right.
Thank you. Welcome back, Trustee Ortiz.
Thank you.
Secondly, I would like to congratulate Trustee Miller, who has been named Sergeant-at-Arms for the upcoming Association of Community College Trustees convening that will occur in October of this year. And now, I would like to call Lindsey Moyer. Is she here? If you'll come up to the mic in case anybody has any questions. I'd like to introduce you to Lindsey Moyer. She is our new Executive Director for the Foundation, and as the Executive Director of Bergen Community College Foundation, Lindsey joins our executive team with more than 15 years of development and fundraising experience. For the past six years, Lindsey has served as the National Director of Development and Membership Operations for the National Audubon Society, and previously, she served as in the Development Office with City University of New York. We are very pleased to have Lindsey joining our team, and two weeks ago, she hit the ground running and has already been out there fundraising and working with the community. So are there any trustees that would like to ask Lindsey any questions at this point?
We'll wait till later.
Thank you very much. A pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. I thought today I would give you a little view of what the unemployment rates, the really the financial situation in the state looks like, enrollment trends, and what can we can expect for the near future. If you look at the screens behind you, you will see that unemployment in June of 2015, Bergen County has one of the largest numbers of unemployed citizens in the state. Now, the percentage is not as high, but the number of unemployed folks is. And why is that important? It's important because there's been a lot of research that says the unemployment trends also trend with enrollments in colleges. So as our unemployment rates go down, you will see that our enrollment numbers also go down because more and more people are going back to work. And if you actually lay these two slides over one another, you would see that there are places here where you have increased enrollment, where the economy was really bad, and then you have decreases where the economy gets better. And right now, we are in one of those decreasing modes, which means our economy in the state should be getting better. It also indicates that there's usually a five or six dot amount on the slide for the decreases, so we've got at least one or two more years left in this cycle. Now, colleges actually look at these times of decreased enrollments, and they generally see a decrease in their graduation rates. But I want you to know that the faculty and staff at Bergen have been working extremely hard, and what you see at Bergen instead during this time period is an increase in graduation rates, which means that our faculty and staff are working extremely hard with the students that we have in our classes to make sure that they not only succeed, but they make it to graduation. They do this in a lot of ways, but one of the ways is to make sure that we have classes that are offered at the right times and in the right venue. As you can see from this chart, we have an increase of students who really want to take classes during the daytime hours and a decrease in students who want to take classes at night. And so the deans and the department chairs have worked really hard to accommodate the students with the appropriate schedules. We're also seeing a slight increase in the number of hybrid courses offered, and we hope to continue to grow our distant learning class offerings because we know a lot of students depend on those. Now, you've asked us to present to you assessment of student learning and what we're doing in various departments each board meeting. So I thought I would let you know that the faculty has been working extremely hard to make sure that all the programs we have have learning outcomes. And in fact, this is a little snippet from our website, and if you go into the website, you will see that every single program we have has learning outcomes, and those are being assessed. I thought it might be interesting to pull up one program so you can see what these look like, and this one is for the Associate in Science Degree in Exercise Science. With that said, I would like to invite Professor Joan Tashern, who is from our Chemistry Department, to come up and tell you about the assessments being done in the Chemistry Department. Professor Tashern?
So the Physical Science Department is made -- includes two disciplines, physics and chemistry.
Can you get closer to the mic so everybody can hear you, please?
So in -- for both physics and chemistry, we decided to assess two sets of lab reports and look at what improvement occurred over that time. In chemistry, we chose to look at two sets of lab reports from General Chemistry One Lab, which is Chem 141. Our goal was to assess the understanding and the use of the scientific method, and we used the lab reports to analyze that. The two data sources that we -- well, the data source that we chose in Chem 141 were two labs, one which dealt with density and occurred early on in the semester, about the third week, and then one which occurred later, one about heat of neutralization, which occurs around the 12th week of the semester. Our goal was that 80% of the students would achieve at least 80% on their lab, and that there would be an improvement from the first lab to the second lab. This was the rubric that we used to grade the labs. Basically, it divided the lab into three parts, the objective, section on data and collection, which looked at how well the data was presented, how well the calculations were done, and then a section that involved error analysis, the theory of the experiment, and how the data that they collected allowed them to determine the objective of the experiment. So the desired result was that 80% of the students would achieve 80%, and there would be an improvement from the first experiment to the second experiment. We used two different sets. These were from two different semesters. We compared them. So in both cases, the -- there was the -- there was a slight decrease in the grades the students achieved from the first set of experiments to the second. So based on that, well, first of all, to some extent, the material is more difficult in the second experiment, but our suggestion, well, based on that, we're going to ask instructors to put more emphasis on the concepts involved in the experiment, which should help not only the overall score, but also the error analysis section. In physics, okay, again, we use two sets of lab reports, but this time, from one course and then the course that followed, from Physics 2, which is Physics 290, and Physics 3, which is Physics 291. Right? The experiments that were chosen in Physics 2 was an Ohm's Law experiment. Physics 3 was reflection and refraction, and they were selected because they had similar components, so they'd be -- and they also occur around the same time in the semester. Right? Again, we were looking for 80% of the students to achieve 80%, a grade of 80%, and there'd be an improvement from the experiment in Physics 2 to Physics 3, indicating that they had learned, you know, they had improved over from one course to the next. All right? Again, this is the rubric. They divided their experiment -- the physicists divided their experiment into six parts, but they basically covered the same components. Okay? There was the objective, and then the theory of the experiment, the data collection, the analysis, the conclusion. And then they -- the physicists have a section on attendance, and attendance is not just coming to the lab. Attendance was coming, arrival time, arriving on time, but also the preparation, that the student came well-prepared for the lab. All right? And in terms of results, again, as I said, we're looking for 80% of the students to achieve 80 or better, and that there would be an improvement from Physics 2 to Physics 3. And as you can see, the physicists, in fact, didn't -- did accomplish that. They improved the overall total score was improved from Physics -- the experiment from Physics 2 to Physics 3. And here, we -- the emphasis is going to be to kind of talk to students more about coming more prepared for the lab. That would improve the attendance section of the lab. All right? And so -- and this last slide just summarizes what I said about the conclusions. So thank you. You have any questions?
Anyone here have questions?
Chairman Karsten, that completes my report.
Thank you very much. At this time, I don't believe there's any report from the Board of School Estimate. Education and Student Affairs.
We met and we're recommending ESA 1 through 4.
Thank you. Foundation Grants and Endowments, Phil?
Thank you, Carter. Again, I'd like to welcome Lindsey. Again, look forward to working with her, and we had our 17th Annual Golf Outing was scheduled for June 15th. Unfortunately, Mother Nature did not cooperate, and we had the outing on July 13th, which was a beautiful day. And I'm happy to report that as a result of the golf outing, we raised some $34,000 for scholarships this year, despite the fact that we only had 64 participants. So those who did participate and our sponsors certainly emptied their pockets to get us to that level. Thank you, Carter.
Okay. Audit and Finance?
Audit and Finance recommends or move on AF 1 through AF 20.
Thank you, Dottie. Personnel. Jim?
We have a meeting today, and we recommend the approval of P 1 through P 7.
Site and Facilities?
Site and Facilities met, and we offer SF 1 through SF 3.
And Strategic Planning and Issues?
Strategic Planning, the -- although the college was very quiet this summer, strategic planning in middle states was certainly not quiet because Dr. Yun Kim continues to crack the whip no matter what the time of the season is. We have a working group and steering committee meeting on September 4th, as well as preparing for our October 27th meeting, where Dr. Ken Ender, who is our Middle States Chair, who will be conducting or leading the evaluation come March, will be visiting the campus. I am sure that he will want to speak with some board members, trustee members, as well as faculty members, et cetera, et cetera. We're excited about that meeting, and we feel that we are totally prepared for that meeting. As well as the Middle States draft document is in its final stages, and I believe it will be available shortly to all faculty and all trustees for their comments and review, and we would appreciate any input that all may have. And if any of my colleagues on the board would like a copy of that draft document, please either contact Dr. Yun Kim or myself for a copy. Thank you, Carter.
Jermaine, would you like to say anything? You don't have a committee to report on yet.
I'm just happy to be back and looking forward to working with everyone. Very happy to be here.
Lorraine?
To expand on my last report, a newly group of students, as well as their administration and myself, are working to streamline the issue of pay-to-print, and we're coming closer to a conclusion. We'd like to thank Dr. Malaney for helping reach out to the professors to give us a better understanding of what the workload will be like this semester and to see how many students will be in need of a printer. This has allowed us to hear from the professors. SGA, as well as our team, have created a survey, which will be distributed to the students, and it will get their feedback. So now, with the help of the professors, the deans, and the students, we'll be able to come to a conclusion to streamline and fix the issue of the pay-to-print. Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business? If not, I'll open this to the public. New business opened to the public. Does anyone in the public wish to speak?
Hello. My name is Laura Zottarelli. I am the president of the Student Government Association. First, I would like to introduce the newest member to our team. Her name is Erica Campo. She is the Executive Assistant of the Student Government Association. We are currently in the process of conducting two student surveys, one of which is the Pay-to-Print initiative that Lorraine briefly spoke about, and we are also working on a survey to gain student feedback about the Success 101 courses, and we'll be working with the Faculty Senate in terms of those results. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
My name is Gabe Winesian. I'm the Chief of the Torch. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Walter for giving us the opportunity to go to the medical building and take some photos. We're really looking forward to getting that on print. I think it's going to make a very interesting centerfold, so you guys will get a firsthand glimpse as to what to expect with that building. So really, I'd like to say thank you for that. I just had a couple of questions regarding -- so basically, what you mentioned earlier about the online courses, how that's been increasing, that we're trying to increase online courses, obviously to accommodate people, you know, today's society, people are working, people are parents, you know, especially with community colleges and whatnot. With this increased demand for online classes, also with the 64 lecturers that were let go over the summer, I am aware that it is a little bit more difficult to appoint people to teach online courses due to, you know, perhaps getting certified through TOPS and whatnot, through other things and that. How may that play? How may that be an impact? Or how has that -- how was that dealt during the summer to replace those classes with adjuncts or other full-time professors?
I can let Dr. Malaney talk about TOPS if he'd like to. Dr. Malaney?
Sure.
Gabe, thanks for your question. I think the truth of the matter is, we have many more people who are qualified to teach online than we currently have demand for courses. So as far as I'm aware, we had no reduction in online courses for any reason this semester.
Would you even provide maybe a before and after chart of how many online courses were afforded per semester?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, in regards to that, basically, one of the concerns -- oh, sorry, I was a little close there. One of the concerns was basically that with the 64 lecturers that were now gone, looking for adjuncts, there are some fantastic adjuncts. I can speak personally. I've had some adjuncts that were fantastic professors. But, you know, lecturers do tend to be more experienced and whatnot, and a lot of them, people who held PhDs, masters, et cetera. How may that have been something to look at now that with adjuncts appointing to that position? Was there ever a worry, perhaps in a dip in quality, for those courses?
We have exceptional adjuncts here, and in fact, I think the head of our adjunct union is still with us. Is she still here, or did she leave? She was here earlier. They are exceptional faculty, just as our lecturers and our tenure-track faculty are. The deans and the department chairs work very hard to make sure that all faculty teaching in our institution are the best that they can possibly be. So we celebrate the adjuncts who work with us, who bring a different experience with them to the classroom.
Thank you. And I have a question for Lorraine. Hi. So in regards to the survey for pay-to-print, one of the things I was hearing was around perhaps having a student cap on how many papers they could print per semester, I believe, or -- so is this survey that you guys are going to put out for the students and whatnot, is that going to be something that you'd be able to finalize on that -- on a particular number?
Yes. As far as that question, that is open-ended right now, and it is up to the students to decide what they think would be sufficient in how many free pages will be allotted from the college.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Gabe.
At this time, I'll just welcome everyone back for the first semester of this fall, and those of you who are new students, you're doubly welcome, and I look forward to being with the second-year students, who are hopefully some third when they graduate in the spring. So let's have a great year, and I will take special attention to the fact that the faculty has been very cooperative. We have a fine faculty, and I look forward to them working with the students. At this time, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of July 7th, 2015. Is there a second? All in favor? Next will be the Consent Agenda, which is Audit and Finance 1. which is Audit and Finance, I through 20. Education, I through four. Personnel, I through H, II, III, IV, V, VI, VII. And Site and Facilities, I, II, and III. Is there a motion on the Consent Agenda? Second? All in favor? Is there any need for us to go to Executive Session? If not, I'll simply reopen to the public in case they want to say something further. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you very much.